You're ready?
We're on.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the June 26, 2023, meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, and we're gathered to do the ditch hearing, but I'll do introductions first. I'm Jeff Dent, President of Board, Vice President, and fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, to my right is fellow Commissioner Barb Lewis, our Deputy Administrator and Counsel, Eric Ostetler is here with us, and our clerks Sarah Dinova and Jennifer Law Raven. So, if we could read the resolution to open the hearing, please?
Okay, we're just going to note the time of the public hearing, the 1:30 public hearing for consideration of the drainage improvement petition for the Jones Number 60 watershed, and you may begin with the recap of what we're going to do today.
Okay, yeah, we don't have to actually do the resolutions anymore.
Correct, we've changed that a little bit recently.
Yep, keep forgetting that. Okay, so the hearing is now open, and we will turn it over to Dan or Brett to, Dan's going to read the report, the first hearing report. I'll turn it over to the microphone to you.
Afternoon Commissioners, I'll read the first hearing report for the Jones Number 60 into the record here today.
Wait, I'm sorry, I forgot to go through the, what can happen today.
Okay.
Sorry, Dan, let me go through the process here. First of all, I'd like to welcome everyone to the first hearing for consideration of the Jones Number 60 drainage improvement petition. There is a sign-in sheet circulating the room. We ask that you please sign the sheet to indicate your attendance. This is what will happen today. We'll first hear a report from the County Engineer and Soil and Water Conservation District. There are copies available of the report. Following the presentation, there'll be time for questions from the board. After board questions, the board will hear from any interested owners that wish to testify. Don't have to testify if you're here, but you're certainly welcome to. Those speaking for or against the petition must be either an owner, as defined in Section 6131-01 of the Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner. And we do have to stick with that. We've had some differences on that in the past. Before accepting testimony for or against the petition, the board will acknowledge receipt of any landowner written testimony before hearing live testimony. We'll first call on those wishing to testify in favor of the petition. We'll then call all those wishing to testify in opposition to the petition. Before testifying, you'll be asked to take an oath. After all those wishing to testify for or against the petition have been heard, there'll be an opportunity for responsive or rebuttal testimony. The board will then close the public hearing after all testimony evidence has been presented. After listening to testimony in the report of the engineer, the board will decide whether to proceed with the survey and design or dismiss the petition. The board must consider the following factors in making its decision. Number one, whether the proposed improvement is necessary. Number two, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare. And three, whether the cost of the proposed improvement will be less than the benefit the improvement provides. If the board decides, if the board proceeds with the petition, the Delaware County Engineer will then prepare plans, reports, and individual schedules of assessments for the project. When those plans are complete, a final hearing will be set. Notification of the hearing will be given to landowners, and the board will then consider the project. So, with that overview, I will now turn it over to Dan to read the first hearing report.
All right, I'll get us going this afternoon with first hearing report. Jones Number 60 Drainage Petition for ORC 6131, June 26, 2023. This report has been prepared for the preliminary hearing on a drainage improvement petition filed by Glenn Harsh and others on January 4, 2023. The original petition was signed by three individuals representing eight of the 33 parcels in the watershed. The general location and course of the requested improvements is quoted from the petition as follows. "In Delaware County, Radnor Township, within the Jones Number 60 watershed and generally following, but not limited to the course and termini of the existing improvements." The following is the nature of the work petitioned, as quoted from the petition. "To generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required, indoor creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this petition." Petition process. This petition has been submitted according to Section 6131 of the Ohio Revised Code, which authorizes the Board of Commissioners to act on behalf of benefited property owners to make drainage improvements. If the Board of Commissioners decides to proceed with a project, the costs related to the improvements and the development of plans, report, and schedules are assessed to the landowners in the watershed according to the benefit received to their watershed acreage. These special assessments will be added to the property taxes for each property and can be spread over a maximum of a 15-year period. It says eight in the report, and that is incorrect. Property owners may also choose to pay their assessment in a lump sum payment prior to placement on their property taxes. Additionally, the improvements will be placed on the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program in perpetuity per ORC Section 6137, and the annual maintenance assessment will appear on property tax statements as a special assessment in the same manner as the construction assessments. These annual maintenance assessments are generally in the range of 2% to 3% of the construction assessment. It should be noted that property owners are only assessed for those improvements that are located downstream from their properties. No property is assessed for improvements located upstream. The public agencies that own rights of way for public roads would also be assessed for both construction and maintenance costs in the same manner as private property owners. The decision to approve a petition project is a three-step process. First, a viewing of the proposed improvement is conducted for the commissioners to familiarize themselves with the watershed and general conditions. The commissioners conducted the viewing for this project by drone video on April 24, 2023. Next, a preliminary hearing is held to consider the initial feasibility of the proposal. It is this preliminary first hearing that is before us today. If this petition is approved, a final hearing will be conducted to further consider this petition. At that time, final details such as engineering plans and specifications, cost estimates, and a proposed scheduled assessments will be known. Existing conditions. The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District and Delaware County Engineers Office have made the following observations using onsite evaluation and a review of available aerial photography, topographic mapping, and soil mapping. The Jones Number 60 watershed, as defined for this hearing, measures 763 acres. Approximately 589 acres, or 77% of the watershed, is agricultural use. Industrial use comprises 98 acres, or 12.8% use. wooded acres comprise about 60 acres, or 7.8% of the area. 1.4% of the land is residential use, and 7/10% is road right-of-way. The Jones Number 60 drainage system was originally constructed in 1877 and revisited in 1899. These improvements were all constructed using the ORC 6131 drainage petition process. The drainage system does not appear to be functioning at or near optimum capacity due to a lack of comprehensive maintenance and the generally deteriorated condition of the infrastructure. The absence of uniform surface grading has resulted in areas of surface ponding. Sporadic blowouts along the course of the existing subsurface drain were also observed. These blowouts are a result of an aged and overburdened subsurface drainage system. While some outlets for the various subsurface drainage systems appear to be unobstructed, the downstream channel has evidence of being affected by log jams and debris accumulation, and some evidence of siltation is present in the upstream portion of the channel. While the existing drainage system still provides some degree of drainage benefit, it does not appear to function as a good and sufficient outlet. Construction estimate. Items of work would include the following basic elements: open channel restoration, subsurface drain shaping and grading, seeding and mulching of disturbed areas, and subsurface drain installation ranging in size of approximately 24 to 30 inches in diameter. Construction: $401,282.20. Administration, engineering, and inspection: $15,000. Drainage maintenance: first year startup, $20,064.11, at 5% of the construction estimate, for a total project estimate of $436,346.31. It is important to understand that the above estimates are preliminary and made in the absence of a current detailed topographic survey of the project area. The above estimate assumes complete replacement of the subsurface drains. Should the project proceed beyond this first hearing, the capacity and condition of the existing tile will be evaluated according to the applicable engineering standards. Any reach of the project that meets these standards in its current condition may be considered for inclusion onto the Drainage Maintenance Program without requiring improvement. Should the project fail to be approved at the final hearing, the benefiting landowners, as defined by ORC 6131, may still be responsible for the cost of project administration, survey, and engineering design. This estimate does not account for construction contingency costs. Contingency is calculated for the final hearing if the project is approved. Typically, contingency is estimated at 15% of the construction cost of the project. Assessments. If the project moves forward to the second hearing, the Ohio Revised Code instructs the county engineer to calculate the assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received from the improvements for the various properties in the watershed. ORC 6131 states that uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other man-made causes shall be considered as benefited by an improvement required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands. Benefits are further defined as elimination or reduction of damage from flood, removal of water conditions that jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, increased value of land resulting from the improvement. Individual parcel assessments are not calculated for the preliminary hearing and are only calculated if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. Factors favorable, unfavorable. ORC 6131 requires the county engineer to state and report factors favorable and unfavorable to a proposed project, estimate the cost of the project, and state an opinion as to whether the benefits of the project exceed the cost. The following information is presented for your consideration. Factors favorable to the improvement: One, improved surface and subsurface drainage in the watershed. Two, improved outlet for subsurface drainage components of household sewage treatment systems and for residential drainage systems. Three, reduction of future deterioration of surface and subsurface drainage infrastructure. And four, annual inspections and maintenance of the improvement in perpetuity. Factors unfavorable to the improvement: One, temporary land use disruption during construction. Two, cost of construction and maintenance may be a burden to some landowners. And three, removal of existing trees and brush in improvement area. Benefits versus cost. Assessments for property within the watershed are calculated based on the benefits derived. A publication by the Ohio State University Extension titled Returns to Farm Drainage details several studies conducted by Ohio State researchers on the effects of drainage on crop yields. The studies show that fields with good drainage will produce higher yields than fields that have poor drainage. A recently completed 25-year study showed that subsurface drainage increased corn yields by 24% to 39%, and increased soybean yields by 13% to 46%. The same study also analyzed the return on investment for installing subsurface drainage in a field, and found that for corn, $4 is returned for every $1 invested, and for soybeans, $3 is returned for every dollar invested. To state it generally, the benefits of drainage will equal the increased yield multiplied by the market price. The increased value or benefit for residential properties is a much more subjective and difficult to quantify. For residential properties, the lack of an adequate drainage outlet can dramatically deteriorate the condition of household sewage treatment systems, potentially limiting the value of the home for resale. Should the existing system fail, the cost to perform repairs or construct an alternate sewage treatment system can range from the thousands to tens of thousands of dollars. It would also be reasonable to consider the cost of environmental degradation due to residential sewage treatment systems that may not be functioning properly. Other benefits that are commonly perceived as a result of drainage improvements focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities that have planned and maintained stormwater drainage infrastructures generally have higher resale values than those communities that are known to have a history of drainage problems or flooding. Conclusions. Based on all the information gathered and generated for this project, I believe this project is technically feasible and would adequately serve the project area's drainage needs. However, the testimony brought to the board by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the costs should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project. Should the current petition be approved to proceed to a final hearing, the petition bond will be returned, and detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and a scheduled assessments would be prepared. Additionally, a benefit versus cost analysis will also be performed to further determine the feasibility of advancing this proposed project.
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Do you have any questions?
No question.
This is largely, I've just had a couple of questions. This is largely an agricultural area.
Correct.
This watershed, but there is some industrial use. What is that?
That would be, at this time, we believe that the quarry that is in the northeast corner of the watershed is drawn in as well. The exact outlet of it, we're not entirely certain of, which would be something that we would take a closer look at, but that would be the industrial use that is currently listed in there, the hundred or so acres that the quarry owns and makes up.
Okay, okay. The, I know we went through this at a previous ditch hearing where we actually calculate the benefit to, on average, to an acre of farmland, you know, between beans and corn. Or maybe Brett, you remember those numbers? I don't know if you guys have those. Again, I understand they're averages and all sorts of variables.
Not for this one. We didn't do that for this one.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. That depth of an analysis would be something we would typically do at the final hearing, not at this stage. This analysis is more general in nature, but that, if the board approves the project, we would absolutely prepare that as we would move forward to a final hearing.
Okay. All right, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I think we're good. Okay, so the next step in this process is to open it up for
testimony from anyone who does wish to testify. Again, you must be an owner or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner to speak. So I'll open it up first to those who wish to speak in favor of the petition. Okay, if you could come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and I'll swear you in because we're recording this.
Hi, I'm Glenn Harsh from Glendale Farms, and I am one of the ones that proposed this system to be improved.
Yeah, well, I'll swear you in, and then we'll identify which parcel. I know you have more than one parcel. Do you solemnly swear a testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes.
All right, if you could help us identify which parcels. Do you have the map there?
Yes, I do. I am the 13, and I also farm for 14, but I'm not the owner of that. And I also do all the farming for 20 and 29. Well, 27, 20, and 29.
Okay.
And those are my father's, and he's 92 years old, so he didn't come.
Okay. All right, we will, I have sworn you in, and you can proceed with your testimony.
Well, we brought this to Soil and Water District because we went to repair the tile, and the blowouts were numerous, and we decided that since in the past when we have done that, repaired the tile, we'd go to fix one that was completely blown out, and the next one beside it would collapse. And actually, one of the holes I looked at yesterday, we actually put, we put banding and belting over top of it to try to hold it even better, and spend extra money to do that, and the tile that was blown out had banding and belting on it from the tile that was right next to it that blew out five, 10 years ago. And I, so we decided to get the recommendations of a well-established tile person in the area, and he looked at it and said, Glenn, I'm not going to be able to do any better than you. He said, what you've been doing, the same thing is going to happen to us. When I go to put one tile in, either the next one's going to break because it's already cracked, or I'm going to barely touch it, and it's going to break right while I'm there, and I might have to just keep going. And he proposed at that time that we should go ahead and just replace the whole tile, 24-inch tile, from the beginning of my property all the way down. But, you know, he went on to say that it needs to go on even further than your property lines, so you really should bring it to the Soil and Water. So, that's what we're doing. It is very much needed. It is definitely affecting our yield in addition to ponding that we have right at the immediate tile area. It's slowing down drainage further on up, which causes more blowouts to the smaller tile, the laterals that feed it. So, it is a very much needed project for that area. It will help the drainage on some of the houses that are in the area also, because that's, this is the main tile. This is the main part of the tile. So, that is why I proposed this, and Mr. Lehner and Mr. Lee also agreed, adamantly agreed that we should bring this forth and move forward with it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, others who want to testify in support of the petition? Again, don't have to testify, but if you want to, now's the time to speak in support of the petition. All right, last chance, those in favor. Okay, now we'll move to those who wish to speak in opposition to the petition. Come right on up.
Hello, I'm Larry Keneven, 6656 Dublin Road, Delaware, Ohio.
Could you slow down? I didn't get your name.
Pardon?
Your name.
Larry Keneven, K-N-U-E-V-E-N.
All right, let me swear you in, and I'll, you can identify the parcels. Do you solemnly swear a testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
All right, great. If you could, given us your address, you could identify the parcels if you can see it on the map.
Parcel number four.
Number four.
Which is right on the, what would that be, east corner? Top east. And my problem is, I don't think this is going to help any of the residential homes that Richard Lehner just sold the lots, 27, 10, and four. He hasn't sold the other one yet. But I don't see any benefit to any of us by running a tile that far away when the grade partially goes uphill. And I've got pictures on my phone from April 13. I don't know when your little drone flew over.
When was it? I know we did the viewing later on in April, but I'm not sure.
I was hit that when you did the viewing, but I don't exactly, but April.
Can I?
Sure.
Just a correction, I don't think your parcel four. Okay, that's a different map. That's here.
What is that then? What's that?
That's from the viewing.
Okay.
Different parcel, Brett?
Yeah, yeah, here's this map.
Is that 11? I can't even hardly see it.
Yes, parcel number 11.
11, okay.
Oh, they got different maps now?
Yeah, we have different maps from the viewing.
I never got that one.
All right.
Okay, so I'm 11.
Okay.
But we purchased the land, and like I say, I've got pictures on my phone from April 13 of the east side of my land, used to be farmed by Richard Lehner, and there's standing water on it, four to five inches, and this is way after your drone flew over, after a dry spell. Unless there's an underground flow of water underground going away from the river, my water's not going to get to this drainage pipe. In fact, it was like a year ago, Richard Lehner ran a tile. I don't know, can I walk up there? Yeah, okay. This is our shared access drive right here. He ran a tile from there, clear down to there, to drain his farmland into that. Well, how did, why didn't he run it over here? That'd help us. I mean, he didn't. And, you know, he's probably the one that's telling you this thing needs to be replaced too, because he's planning on putting the new one in if I don't stay there.
If you could go back.
He's planning on bidding one.
Yeah, yeah, go back to the microphone. We are recording it.
I just, I just haven't, if you, if you look at my pictures, you can see that the land grades up, not down. And they say it's going to improve my sewage. No, I don't have a sewage yet, but when I do, I hope that works okay. So, I don't understand why he runs a tile across there to improve his drainage, and the only way I'm going to improve mine is if I run a tile over there, which is not my land to do it. So if they don't run something up to there when they put this in, it doesn't help any of us. And it seems like I'm the only one here, but Richard still owns the other property above me. And I am familiar with Delaware County, because I don't know if you know what, 6656 Dublin Road, where that is? Concord, your new sewer plant is right behind my house.
Yeah, sure.
And I also know that they, they told us it was going to improve all the septic scenario, and they're all failed. Nobody in the area has been able to tie in. Only sewage is coming from the other side of the river. Concord Township Homes on our side of the river are still putting septic systems in. So I was, we were fed a line back then, different commissioners, but I found you can't fight city owner, but if you don't try, you don't know. That's why I'm here.
All right.
So, unless, I would like somebody to show me how it's going to help me. I'm not a farmer.
Well, one of the, one of the principles of the ditch petition or the drainage maintenance program is that some, some folks don't receive a direct benefit, but they do contribute water to the watershed.
But we'll be in the tax part of it though, right?
They do contribute water to the watershed, so everybody in the watershed.
So I will pay for something that doesn't help me.
Don't know.
Don't know. Well, that's why I'm here. And Barb, I did have your sign in my yard this past year.
All right.
Nice talking to you.
Thank you.
I have, could Brett come up have a question, or one, Dan, one of them. He was indicating the water where he lives does not work its way into the watershed. Assuming that to be an accurate statement, then that would be reflected on the second hearing.
Absolutely.
He's not listening, but. Larry? Larry, can we have your attention?
Yeah.
I asked a question. The question was, if we deter, if it was determined that your water is not part of the watershed, then you'd be removed from it between now and the second hearing. Just for the record, I want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, absolutely. Watershed is something we look at as part of engineering design. We use a completely automated tool at this stage of the process. As we move forward, we take a closer look at that. If we find that the watershed's an error, we revise it, and the project moves forward. If water exits that property, though, and enters the improvement, by state law, it is required to share in the cost of construction and maintenance.
And it's considered a benefit.
Absolutely. The state law equates benefit to use. So, yes, they may realize no monetary benefit, but in terms of the state law, benefit equals use. The other thing, as far as running a tile to, across ground that he does not own, I know that we discussed at the viewing, the opportunity to amend the petition. To the best of my knowledge, that was not done. There would be, you know, also the opportunity to file a second petition to connect to any improvements that would be constructed as part of this project if the board chooses to move forward.
Yeah, I just want to get that clarified, make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so appreciate it. Thanks, Brett. All right, others wishing to speak in opposition? You raising your hand, sir? You want to come up and speak in opposition?
Yeah, my name's Guy Williams. My wife, Kami Williams, we live at Parcel Four on Dildine Road, 4689.
Okay, let me swear you in before you start your testimony. Do you solemnly swear a testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes?
You said parcel four, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, you may proceed.
First off, I didn't hear anything about the property up here. He's talking about 98 acres of industrial. That's property that Penry's had, which went to Martin Marietta, at which time Martin Marietta had, came up with a project to run the water off of the quarry to pump it out, which everybody was opposed to, which caused a lot of water on the other side of the road for Lehner, supposedly. Now, the problem being is that when a farmer closes off a ditch and starts farming closer to it, it bottlenecks the water, does it not? I'm asking, you know, you guys need to go back on the maps and look. Also, my understanding is that either Old Castle or National has bought the previous partials, which is 26, 19, and possibly looking at several more following up through there, which I would like to know where all that water's going to go when they start mining it. Now, when National got it, you guys approved for the water way to be fixed on the other side of Jones. And on that one, they put in a pipe, which now the quarry has not pumped anything. So now you've got all that acreage sitting there with water within, I'd say, two to three foot of the top of the rock. Now, water takes the path of least resistance. Water's going to travel through that rock and go back towards what everybody used to call the marsh, which has always had water, and it's always been that way. I mean, if you've been around there, you might know something about it from people back in the day or whatever, but I'm just saying it's another thing that hadn't been looked into. Another thing is, is the problem with, if National's buying up the property... Another thing is, is the problem with, if National's buying up the property around there, who's actually going to be getting the benefit? So is everybody going to pay for this now, and then National's going to get the benefit in what's left of the farm? Is there a guarantee these guys aren't doing all this to get rid of the water, to make a new waterway for National that's going to cost us money but make it worth more to buy their property? There's a lot of things I haven't heard addressed here, you know, other than the, the property discrepancy that they're talking about. I'm pretty sure that'd be public knowledge who owns that. I'm dead against it. I don't have a problem with him, you know, having to go up there and fix some blowouts, and I know that stuff's sat there, but that marsh has been like that since back in Penry's day when they owned that over there. I've got sand and gravel on my side. I'd like to put a pond in. Anybody want to donate and come over and dig me a pond, put dirt in? No, that's on me. You know, so I'm saying, that's, from what I always knew, that was kind of a, you might need to check ended if that's not some kind of a reserve area even down there where it's wet, that wetland. If you drain that, you're taking it out of that, aren't you? You got to check with the State of Ohio for that. I mean, another problem is, is several times I've noted, and I took pictures across the road, and water seems to build up where they did the new one several years back. And when that water pulls up so high, it seems like on the south side of the road, you get some water. So I'm wondering how many tiles are running under the road, and which way they're running? Has anybody done a test for water running across? These are all questions that, you know, I, I assume that whoever checked into this is aware of or will check into, but at this point, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions regarding the quarry.
Sure. Yeah, I was going to ask about the quarry.
We may be asking questions. The quarry, I'm going to say it's a hole in the ground, so what happens to the water there? And is that, will that be taken into consideration as we go through the process between the first and second hearing?
Yeah, I'm not currently aware of what the, the quarry's plans are. We're not at the stage of the game where we would do that much investigation and make contact with the quarry. We certainly have a good relationship with the quarry as a result of some other projects that they've been involved with, and as part of survey, engineering, and design, we would reach out to them and try to ascertain what the, the plans are. As far as most quarries, I'm not a, not a mining expert by any means, but I, I think most quarries use some kind of a pumped system to, to get the water out of their hole, so to say.
Are they required to pump it into the current watershed, or are they able to pump it outside the watershed?
I, I really can't answer that for you, Commissioner.
These are all questions that obviously you're going to have to put into.
Yeah, I do know Mr. Williams referenced the, the Jones Timms Project, which was done back in two thousand eight. There, there was a connection provided to the quarry, that specific quarry, to outlet a certain amount of cubic feet of water per second, CFS, into the Jones Timms tile. I don't, I don't believe they are currently actively using that because that, that quarry is not active. At that point, the, the water in the quarry would spill out and, you know, kind of bleed through the rock or, or over land.
If I understood Mr. Williams' comments, there's his belief that a couple of the other parcels will become part of the quarry, is that?
I, I don't know that at this moment.
Is it, is it hypothetical or real?
I can get you the paperwork on it, sir.
Well, I just, just a question. I'm asking.
I'd also talk to one.
Sir, I'm talking to, okay.
Whether that's, those parcels are owned by the quarry, developed as a quarry, you know, we have a certain set of standards that we design agricultural drainage systems to. We will continue to apply those standards. And, and the quarry, if they use the system, then they will obviously contribute financially to the project, and also their, their flow coming out of that would be restricted to the, the ag drainage needs.
And I don't believe they're part of this petition, not one of the signees, I don't believe.
They, they did not sign the petition. They are one of the benefited properties.
Yeah. Just wanted to clarify that from the place of the comment I heard. Thank you.
Yep. Brett, before you go, is there any, maybe this is something you'll research from the first and second, if we go, if you go to the final. Is there any unique process to, when you have a quarry that's, has water in it, to, you know, in addressing a ditch?
Are you referring to like some environmental regulations or?
Anything, you know, or just water flow?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't know what standards get applied to quarries. It's not my area of expertise. I know based on, you know, my experience with working on the Jones Timms Project, we're going to look at the, as far as utilizing any system that we would design and maintain, we're going to look at that quarry as if it were ag ground. And then there, there are some simple calculations you can do as far as the amount of, of CFS coming off of ag ground that we would permit to enter into an ag tile. We're going to restrict them to that ag flow. We're not going to let them contribute in excess of that ag flow. Now, we've also had, you know, a similar situation, and I think Jones Timms was, was like this, where, you know, we told them what we, we could allow. They said, we'd like to have this. We figure what size tile that is, and then they pay the difference. And, and that's exactly what they did with the Jones Timms tile. It, it's, it's quite a bit bigger than what the ag needs of that watershed would be, and they paid the, the upside, or the upcharge in, in the size difference. We would look at that, and obviously, you know, if there's, if we can work with a quarry and, and make the system better for everybody involved, then we're certainly going to do that.
Okay. And I guess with the zoning process, we don't even know if it will be allowed.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
It's true, too.
Above, above me, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for Brett? Okay. Thank you, Brett. Yeah. You have to come back up to the mic if we're going to speak again.
I've got the information at the House. I can't believe anybody that's involved in this doesn't know it. It's beyond me. With Martin Marietta, had it, Martin Marietta paid the bulk of the bill, because at the time, they were putting it in to benefit them and the neighborhood. And they were willing to put a solid pipe going down either on the south side or to open the ditches and clean them back out on the north side. This is public knowledge. I got the papers still at the House. I got a lot of the paperwork from Martin Marietta still. I worked for him. Now, the property that they have acquired, that nobody seems to know about, that is in the midst of zoning. They're trying to figure out whether they're going to allow them to bust rock up top or if they're going to have to do it down the hole. And at this time, the water's not being drained out, but they got approximately a twenty-four inch pipe at best to pump the water out. Now, that's good for where that's at, but if you've ever checked with National and looked and see what they do, drive up Section Line Road, go down Klondike Road, it doesn't take anybody with too many brains to figure out how much water's going to come out of that. My problem is, is the water right now that's up there is still going to go down to the ground and cause more problems down to there. If they're getting ready to start pumping it, it seems to me that's going to lessen the burden of the water over there. So I think everybody's jumping the gun in whether it's to further their property value for resale. I'm not saying they are, but from what I've heard, and if I get documentation of it, I will bring that to you, too. And like I said, I'll get the, the name and the number of the guy that I talked to in the zoning that's been in contact with National.
Okay. Further testimony in opposition to the petition?
I think Larry has a comment.
Yep. You want to come back up to the mic, please?
Nobody's mentioned, who put this existing tile in in the first place?
That was done a hundred and some years ago. I'm not sure if Brett or Dan know the answer to that.
Yeah, the existing tile was installed per the ORC sixty-one thirty-one process. The dates, Dan mentioned them in the report, but yeah, it's, it was done prior to nineteen fifty-seven, well, prior to nineteen fifty-seven in this case, would have been done using this exact same process that was in place at that time, was done prior to any provision for ongoing maintenance. It is not on a drainage maintenance program.
That's the big distinction, I think. Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Requested containment.
Others speaking in opposition? Last chance. All right. We will close the, the testimony at this point. Comments, questions? Commissioners?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and comment, and we knew we'd close the hearing, it might lead to other comments. First of all, our role is very clear in what our role is in this project. There are questions that we will have between, assuming it goes to a second hearing, there's questions that we will have related to the quarry, et cetera, that will have to be answered before, and I think Soil and Water would have, make the same comment, there's things they don't know right now. Quarries in one of these watersheds is a fairly unique thing for us, but we'll make sure we get answers to those questions to the benefit of the common good. I do think, I've heard enough today that I do believe the benefits exceed the cost as I understand it today, and I think it justifies going to a second hearing, and that after comments, no, too, I would ask that we close the hearing, and, and that would be how I would approach it. But open up another commissioner if you have any comments.
Comments?
Do you? The time is two-ten. The hearing is closed.
We don't need a resolution.
We don't need a resolution.
Oh, we don't need a resolution.
Yeah, I know, everything's changed. We've got to react.
We just noted the time. It's two-ten PM. The hearing is now closed, so the board can decide if they want to proceed or dismiss.
Well, I'll just add that I think there's enough information that we proceed to a second hearing to get answers to the questions that are yet to be determined, but I do believe at this point that the benefits exceed the cost based on what I've heard today, and the proposed improvements is necessary, and it will be conducive to the public welfare. But again, there are questions related to the quarry that will need clarity on, that make a, have a huge impact upon the ultimate decision. So those are my comments.
Yeah. I, I would also agree that there's, there are questions that we need the answers to. We don't have them yet, and I would ask for the resolution to be read about going to the final hearing.
Resolution number two-three-dash-five-five-two, in the matter of proceeding with the project survey and design for the Jones number sixty watershed drainage improvement petition filed